Good evening, friends. Welcome to the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District Board of Education's meeting. Today is the 28th of June. We called this meeting to order at 4:40 PM this afternoon, and we are now coming back to the dais after being in closed session. There's one item that the board would like to report out to our community, and that's we have a settlement agreement. Case is DN1016-17/18. The summary of that agreement is as follows. As compensatory education only and not subject to stay put or part of an IEP, the district will reimburse parents for speech and language services privately provided to student for the 2017-18 regular school year and the 2018 ESY period and the 2018-29 regular school year as follows. One, a maximum of $9,500 for the 2017-2018 regular school year and 2018 ESY period. Number two, a maximum of $9,500 for the 2018-19 regular school year. The district shall pay reasonable and compensable attorney's fees in the amount of $16,200 for a total settlement here on this case of $35,200. A motion was made by Member Metzer, seconded by Member Maria Leon Vasquez, and it was a unanimous vote from the Board of Education with one absence. Mr. Foster is ill this evening. That is the only item that we have to report out this evening. Sarah, you'll see that all members are present except for Member Foster. And if I could ask on our union leadership today to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Carol. That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Colleagues, if I may, I would like to ask if it's okay for us to move Item 9G a bit earlier in the evening? If we could place that. So the recommendation was right after consent, I believe? If that would be appropriate? And that's because we have attorneys on site with us this evening. And we are pulling Item... I'll get to the consent agenda, but just to let you know, from the consent, we know that we will for sure that the staff is pulling Item 6D4 from consent. That'll be voted on separately, and I'll address that at the time. 6D4. There'll be others undoubtedly, but I just want to make sure you know that at the start. But if there are no objections, we'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as changed. Thank you, Oscar, seconded by Lori. All those in favor, signified. Thank you. Thank you. Sarah, that's a unanimous vote of those of us who are present this evening. That now brings us to the approval of minutes. Friends, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first come from our June 14 meeting. Are there any requests for changes or additions, amendments? Ralph, will you move?
So some...
Thank you, Lori, a second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Sarah, that is a unanimous approval of the minutes for the June 14 meeting of the Board of Education. And that brings us to the June 19 meeting that we had. Are there any questions or changes, amendments that need to be made to those? Thank you. Maria is moving?
No, she's not going to be voting.
Oh, okay. You were absent. Moved by Lori?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ralph. And again, all those in favor, say aye. And we have an abstention. Thank you. So that's five ayes, ayes, yeses, and one abstention, Sarah. Thank you. And now that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Dradi.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to attend the California Labor Management Initiative Conference with our board president, vice president, and two bargaining unit presidents the last two days. It was a great conference where the focus was on cultivating a culture of collaboration focused on student learning. It was affirming to me that we are headed in the right direction as a district in establishing systems of collaboration and distributive leadership. That was consistent with a lot of the conversations we had at the conference. Although we have much work to do to accomplish what we want, I'm glad to hear that we are headed in the right direction, and there was a lot to learn and bring back to the work. This was, however, where we learned of the Supreme Court ruling of Janus versus American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. It was tough and inspiring seeing the most passionate advocates of labor units deal with the news. In the room, I saw people dig deeper in their resolve to explain the importance of the public education and what the bargaining unit has meant to it. It was our... I want to make a statement here. I want our unit members to hear from me that you have a superintendent that understands and presays the importance of union and what he means to the middle class of America, that I will continue to work collaboratively with the unit to support our students and make our public education system better. Other news, we had an unfortunate situation this past weekend whereby one of our community members and parents took his own life on the JAM's campus. Our hearts and prayers go out to the family of the deceased. I want to commend Steve Richardson for acting quickly and thoughtfully in seeing to the needs of the JAM's community and the staff. I also want to commend that and thank Mr. Kerry Upton and other district staff for responding and acting quickly to assist Steve Richardson in addressing the larger SMMUSD community. Lastly, the Santa Monica Police Department acted swiftly and delicately in helping support the school district. Prior to that incident, Chief Cynthia Reynoa and I had actually engaged in numerous conversations about evaluating our security on our campus. We're scheduled to meet in July, and I'm sure that that incident would be a part of the conversation as we look at ways that we can improve and learn from incidents and just different people's knowledge about how we can move forward in securing or at least having or at least improving upon what we already know in our security system. And with that said, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Dradi. Are there any questions for Dr. Dradi? Oscar?
In terms of the discussion around safety, this was not an issue that... We don't foresee that this was a... This could have been a safety issue for our students. This was more an adult situation, right? But is the discussion focused more on student safety or other type of safety?
So I'm anticipating, because where this occurred, that people will have these concerns, and I wanted to let the community know that I'm anticipating to look at those situations because it did happen on our site. Obviously, this was on the weekend. There were no students there. The only person involved was the deceased. But because it occurred on our site, I think for me to not talk about that aspect of it will be irresponsible. So I wanted to at least reach out ahead of time, let people know that we are thinking of them, and we're going to continue to work with authorities to help us.
Thank you, Dr. Dradi. Friends, that brings us to our consent calendar for the evening. And of course, as I mentioned, as we were approving our agenda, we will pull Item 6D4 for a separate vote. And then also, I would like to request that we pull Item 6A4. I intend to recuse myself, as I'm an employee of Santa Monica College, and Maria is also signifying that she'll do that. Are there other items to pull, Lori?
I need to pull 6A1 because I need to recuse myself on one of the independent contractors.
Four and five. So 6, 4, and 5 is what I'm pulling. Thank you. 6, 4, and 5 for the purpose of Maria and myself. 6A4 and 6A5.
For you and Maria.
For the Santa Monica College.
All right. 6A1.
One for Lori.
And me.
And 6D4, as requested by staff. So is there a... Oh, yes, Ralph. Yes.
Just on 6A5, that's not being pulled, right?
It is being pulled.
Oh, it is being pulled. So I'll make also a comment.
All right. Thank you. So if there is a motion to approve the consent absent 6A4, 6A5, 6D4, and 6A1. Moved by John, seconded by Oscar. This is a roll call vote. Member Metzer?
Yes.
Member Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Member Lieberman?
Yes.
Member De La Torre?
Yes.
Member Keen?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. That's unanimous for those items. Thank you. And why don't we go ahead and take 6A1 first? Ms. Lieberman is recusing herself. Is there a motion to approve 6A1? Thank you, Maria. Moved by Maria, seconded by Ralph. Thank you. This is a roll call. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman's an abstention. Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So 6A1 passes. Five in favor with one abstention.
Richard, one question.
Yes.
In the past, when I recused myself, I think either you or someone has asked me the reason on why we're recusing ourselves. And I don't know if that's the practice, but I know that's the practice I'm willing to follow. I just wanted to know if that's still the practice.
It is. And I think I mentioned it for myself and Maria, and I think Lori said it for herself.
No, I actually think I didn't. I just told you the item, but...
Thank you, Oscar.
I think there's a list of independent contractors, and one of them is Providence-St. John's. And even though the amount of money is $1,000, my husband and his law firm do a lot of work for St. John's, so I just want to keep the record clean and recuse myself.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Oscar. It is a good practice, and we will... Thank you. So that brings us now to this item. I believe... Did I get a first and second on that? Did we do that?
A1 is good.
A1 is good. Thank you. We're on A4 and 5. It moved by John, seconded by Oscar. Thank you. And this is a roll call. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez is abstention.
You're abstaining.
We're on 6A4 and 6A5 together have been moved. Yes. Well, you all made the motion, so let me just...
Ralph wanted to speak to one about one of those.
Okay. Ralph, please.
There's a... Just on 6A5, the college and career access pathways. I wanted to thank staff for following up and putting together information on past enrollment in the program because I just think it's important that we have some kind of assessment of the success of the programs and not just approving classes. So I appreciate it, doing it so quickly. So that will be posted up in the minutes, I guess? Is that correct? The additional information regarding enrollment in the...
I see that as a request from Member Metzer, and I think that we would all agree.
For the public to have access to that information.
If we could include that information that Dr. Moore presented to us in the minutes that we'll have from this meeting.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Ralph. I think we all concur. Thank you, Ralph. Mr. Metzer? On the items, my friend. On this...
Clarify the items that we're voting on?
Yes, we are. We are voting now on 6A4 and 6A5 together. Member Leon Vasquez and Member Tavildor and Jeswin will be recusing themselves. We are both employees at Santa Monica College.
And what about 6A1?
We passed that. We did that one.
Okay.
That was our first one.
Right. So I'm a little confused about that, but also the Peque Leighton Family Center agency I work for participates in St. John's community benefits process. So I want to recuse myself as well on that.
Okay. So the chair sees that as an error on his part, and that the record will show that Member De La Torre also was an abstention, recused himself from that item. Sarah?
A1.
A1. That is the chair's error. Great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Metzer?
On A4 and A5.
And A4 and A5.
Yes.
Right. And Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Abstention.
Abstention. Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
These are the... This was A4 and A5?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Keen? And I'm an abstention also, so that's a four yes and two abstentions. Thank you. And then that brings us... That's it? No, it doesn't. 6D4, excuse me. We have 6D4 as our last item that had been pulled. Is there a motion to approve Item 6D4? Moved by Maria. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Seconded by John. And this will bring us to a roll call. Do you want to speak to this, Dr. Dradi?
Yeah. Which was it, after? Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I... So do you want to say your word, Dr. Dradi?
Yes. So I would like to introduce our recommended candidate for the principalship of the Grant Elementary School, Mr. Christian Fier. So why don't you come up there? I'm going to read a little bit of something about you, and you can say a couple of words.
No, no. 6D is a dog. Four?
6D4. D. 6D is a... As a dollar.
Are we on stage? Are we good?
We had this... This is all practice just for you. We're ready, Dr. Dradi.
Okay. Mr. Christian Fier has been appointed as the new principal of Grant Elementary School. He brings 16 years of experience from the Beverly Hills Unified School District, where he has served as a technology and media arts teacher, assistant principal and principal. As principal over the past four years, he led a K-8 with 760 students and 80 staff members. His work has included leading efforts to improve campus safety, introduced new technologies into the classrooms, the implementation of restorative justice practices. Co-developed... He co-developed the annual district science fair, developed a community garden, and introduced an annual run for success in health fair. He was the Beverly Hills Unified Administrator of the Year in 2015-16. Mr. Fier earned a Bachelor of Arts in Communication, Film and Television Production from Cal State University Fullerton, and a Master of Arts in Education Leadership and Policy Studies from Cal State University Northridge. On behalf of myself and the Board of Education, I would like to congratulate Mr. Fier on this new position, and I believe that he will be a great addition to our leadership team.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's take a vote and then have a celebratory comment. Let's do that.
Make sure you should talk.
Yes. Is there a motion on this item? Moved by Lori, seconded by John. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. This is a unanimous vote. Congratulations.
I'm very grateful to be trusting that you will grant support to the community. I really look forward to meeting the staff and parents, but especially the kids. It's just an honor to be joining the... Thank you. Should I repeat that? It's just an honor to be joining the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District, and I hope you all have a wonderful summer. I can't wait to get down to work. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
A warm Santa Monica-Malibu welcome to you.
Great. I can't wait to get my T-shirt.
And, Dr. Dradi, that brings us and the board members, this brings us to our perfected agenda tonight where we moved Item 9G forward.
There's another administrative appointment.
Oh, my gosh, yes! But I thought we did that as a part of the...
We did. He did. No, was there's no names put out under directions?
Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Thank you. The other person's not with us, was here earlier. Dr. Dradi?
Yeah, I can read about that person.
Yes. Thank you, Lori.
Yeah.
No, I'm so happy you did that. And just so the folks at home know that we have a house principal that is going to... Has been recommended.
Good. I would also like to introduce our recommended candidate for a new house principal for Santa Monica High School, Mrs. Pulli... Mrs. Lauren Sheehan. Mrs. Sheehan has been appointed and has been recommended as a new house principal at Samo High. Mrs. Sheehan brings more than 25 years of experience in public education, where she has served as a world language teacher, dean of instruction, and assistant principal. For the past 10 years, she has served as principal at a large comprehensive high school with 2,600 students and 200 staff members in the Deer Valley Unified School District in Arizona. Her work has included leading efforts to create college and career pathways for students, implementing a global studies program for the 21st century, and spearheading a one-to-one technology-rich learning tools for all students. Under her leadership, her high school was named School of Distinction for Excellence and Civic Engagement by the Arizona Department of Education, and was designated as a U.S. News and World Report Best High Schools in the Nation Civil Award three years in running. She was a finalist as the Deer Valley Unified School District Principal of the Year in 2016-17. Mrs. Sheehan earned a Bachelor of Arts in French, Spanish, and Dance from Colorado State University, and a Master of Arts in Education Administration and Supervision from the University of Phoenix. On behalf of myself and the Board of Education, I welcome Mrs. Sheehan to SMMUSD. I believe she will be a great addition to our leadership team.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dradi. And as the chair, unless someone tells me I made a big boo-boo, I'm going to assume that as we passed that item, the 6D4, that we made both appointments at the same time, even though we did not articulate the introduction. Is that correct? All right, great. So she's been... All right. No, we did. We moved 6D4. I just want to let folks... Yes, she is. That's why I was just drawing it to our attention. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dradi. We look forward to seeing her here in person with the community. Now that brings us to 9G, and this is the Resolution Number 1750, Resolution of the Board of Education of the...
Before we move forward, do we need just housekeeping question? Do we need to have her name as part of that motion that we did, or is it fine just to pass it? Because in the agenda, they're... They're named just as administrative appointment. So do we need to speak the name in as part of the motion?
I think what I did is, as I said that we passed 6D4, and we articulated the name before and then a name after. So I'm ruling. That's why I said unless anyone objects, unless you're objecting to how I saw it and how it'll be reported in the minutes, is what... Is that an objection? I mean, I...
I want to make sure she's hired formally, that's all.
Let's just quickly do it.
Quickly do what is what I'm asking?
Oh, just do... Vote on the second administrative appointment that Ben just read into the record.
Okay. Thank you. Moved by Oscar, seconded by Lori. Roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
It's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. That now brings us to Resolution 1750, which is a resolution of the Board of Education of the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, election of 2012 Series D, and the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $120 million, and approving related documents and actions. Dr. Dradi?
So Mrs. Melody Kennedy will introduce the presentation.
I will do that. Good evening, board. Thank you for this opportunity to present this to you tonight. I have actually asked Mr. John Berisi to be with us tonight from Raymond James. He's representing us as our underwriter on this issue. And then I've also asked for Jones Hall to give us our bond counsel here this evening. And representing Jones Hall for Courtney tonight is James Worsen-Nack. I hope I got it right, James. If you've seen the spelling of his name, you'll know why. I've just kind of like tried to stumble through that particular piece. But both of the gentlemen are here to help us kind of get through the POS and all of the legal jargon and all the pieces that we're actually looking at here. And we'll have conversation around why $120 million versus $60 million, which we've had conversation, which has been kind of normal for us over the last few years. Also, I do have our staff with us tonight. We have Kerry Upton to kind of help us through any kind of conversations that we have about projects that are there, and Steve Masetti as well. So I think that we've got all our bases covered, and I'm going to turn it over to John right at this moment to give us a presentation I asked him to put together that you probably haven't quite seen yet in your packet, but I thought it was very important information for us to share.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and staff. My name is John Berisi. I'm one of the underwriters for your team, and I'll be representing the finance team to walk through some important information. And please feel free to ask questions as we walk through this. So this is a relatively brief but has very important information inside this presentation. As you know, general obligation bonds are voter-approved debt, and it is... Thank you. I knew you were walking over here for a reason, and I realized no one could hear me. The first slide here shows the historical assessed valuation of the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. General obligation bonds are paid back through a tax levy upon the assessed valuation of the school district. And as we walk through this, it's just important to see this chart more for informational purposes only as we walk through some of the other forecasts and estimations that you'll see throughout this packet. But the district has had, you know, very nice AV growth, you know, dating back to the early '90s. And when you take a look at the average growth rates, the 5-10, 15-20 year, when you compare that to other districts around the state, for the obvious reasons, being in a coastal community and robust economics here in the area, that's very attractive assessed valuation So we're also going to talk about the estimated sources and uses of funds. We're going to walk through the estimated tax rates, where you currently are with Measure ES, and what the bond sale would look like with $120 million added into the bond program. And then we're going to go through a project drawdown schedule to show you the need for the $120 million today. And we have the facility staff here, obviously, to address any questions on that as we get through it. And then we'll walk through a cost analysis, which will show you the benefit of doing the full 120 today based upon costs of issuance that you would pay by doing two $60 million financings versus one 120 million, 120 million. And then also breaking down the total debt service cost to the taxpayers under each scenario too, which can give you some information to make an informed decision. So taking a look here, if, you know, $120 million is a source, the net original issue premium is the price of the bonds investors pay up for Santa Monica Unified School District bonds, Malibu Unified School District bonds. Then you see we have a project fund of $119,716. That is simply calculated by the district pays the cost of issuance of 284 out of that fund, out of the total par amount. So the $120 million minus 284 gives you that project fund amount. The other funds, capitalized interest fund, that is the excess amount of that net original issue premium that gets deposited to pay future taxes and interest on the bonds, and is very custom and is something you've done in the past. And the underwriters discount is the amount paid to your two underwriters for actually selling the bonds, buying them from the district and selling them to investors. We've also provided you an estimated cost of issuance breakdown of the $284,000 listed out there. out there. You know, we have a bond counsel, financial advisor, two credit ratings, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. Your Moody's rating is currently a AAA, which is the highest possible rating, so that's outstanding. Your Standard and Poor's rating is a AA, hoping to see that maybe moved upwards on this trip. We'll see what happens. Then you have the general other costs that are associated, paying agent, cost of issuance fund, official statement printing, and the rest is a contingency, just in case some of those come in a little higher than expected. But we don't expect it to exceed that $284,000 amount. Any questions on anything on this page? Then we move to what is your current tax rate for Measure ES? So your current tax rate for these bonds is $27.70 per 100,000 of assessed value. As a unified school district, your legal limit is $60, but when the election was marketed to the voters, you wanted to stay under $30 for this Measure ES, as well as BB, which is also currently under $30. But we're going to just be addressing ES here today. So you can see here that, you know, the bonds were structured in a way, the Series A, B, and C that have already been issued, that you can see that they're outstanding, and that those are the current tax rates if nothing gets done. So you have a estimated tax rate for 2018-19 that'll be set later this summer. It should be about $27, $28 in that range, depending on your assessed valuation growth, which should be, continue to be really strong here in the community. And then it drops off to make room for the Series D, which we are talking about today. And then ultimately, you will have a Series E and potentially a Series F. If you issue the full 120 million, you'll have $115 million left underneath this authorization. Any questions on that slide there? Okay. So now what we do is we layer in, there was discussion on, well, if we, the district in the past has been issuing tranches of $60 million typically to fund its construction program. And as in discussions with the district and facility staff, you know, the facilities program and construction is ramping up as many of the big projects under this authorization are now coming online, money needs to be spent. So it was brought to our attention, well, what would that look like for our tax rate if we were to do a $120 million issuance versus doing a 60 and maybe another 60 million next year or the year after? So when you take a look at this chart, you can see that the tax rate will stay the same for the first two years, and then it drops down again to make room for that, you know, fifth and maybe sixth final issuance. You have $115 million after the 120 would be potentially issued. So you can see the bars there that are less than the gray line. That gives you room for the additional bonds when those are ready to be issued. So I think that this addresses the concern that, you know, with this issuing a little bit more in bonds than was typical in the past, would it push up against your, up and above your political promise of $30 tax rate? And the answer is, in this case, it will stay under that. Then we wanted to present to you the estimated three-year spend down. And we put three-year up there. This is actually less than three years, but legally under, for federal tax laws, you have generally three years to spend the funds that you issue. Otherwise, there are some penalties that you would face. But by the looks of this, you know, we come up to where the $120 million will be utilized by March of 2019. As you can see, you know, heading into the beginning, around this time next year, your construction expenditures really ramp up next summer to be almost $10 million a month. So I think when you take a look at that, you know, ask can this money be spent in a timely manner that meets with federal and state tax code? And I think by showing this, the answer would be yes. So I don't know if we want to take a little bit of a break here and talk about that a little bit, or just keep moving?
We'll keep moving. Thank you.
Okay. So one of the things we also wanted to show you was, you know, when you're going to do something a little bit different, issuing a little bit more bonds, so we wanted to compare doing the 120 million today, and then if we did a sale one of 60 million and sale two of 60 million, what would that mean as far as your project dollars that you would garner from the bonds? And when you take a look at this, where it says the subtotal, the, by doing two separate, there are certain costs that just will be what they are for either way, as they're charged on a percentage basis of the amount of bonds you issue. And that's the underwriting fee. That stays consistent with either situation. But there are fixed costs associated with bond sales, primarily the Bond and Disclosure Council, Financial Advisor, and the rating fees. So those are going to be charged on a per series basis. And when you take a look at this comparison, by doing two series versus one on the cost of issuance only, and we'll get to the interest cost on the next slide, that, you know, it saves you, you know, approximately $100, you know, almost $160,000 that you would actually, by doing one series of bonds, you would get an additional $160,000 to your project fund versus splitting it out, because you wouldn't have to pay certain fees twice. So that's step one, analysis one. Then you would take it to the next step and say, okay, that's one benefit of having one bond sale versus two. Then when you take a look at what is the total cost to the district taxpayers, that's another important consideration and has more volume to it. Because when you're dealing with the $120 million and then the 60 million separately, you have, you know, interest that will be charged on the bonds. And by doing one today with current market rates, we compute it to be $182 million would be the total net debt service charged on $120 million. That would be a 1.52 to 1 repayment ratio, well underneath the 4 to 1 state law requirement. Then if you break down the two separate series, you can see that we took into account, it's a little bit hard to estimate where interest rates are, of course, because we don't know what's going to be happening in the economy and other certain factors that change, you know, daily. Interest rates change daily for municipal bonds. So what we did is we took a look back at the various bond sales the district has had, and, you know, interest rates have risen significantly since November of 2016. And then they've come down a little bit as markets have stabilized and a couple of other factors. So what we did is we decided to increase the rates on the sale two by about 75 basis points, which is pretty reasonable, because the gaps that you've seen in between your sales historically over the past three or four years, there's been an increase in 75 basis points in those various series of issuances. So what we think is that, given everything that we were reading in our firm and also RBC Capital Markets, that interest rates are on the rise. Short-term rates are going to be increasing. There's probably going to be two more Fed Funds Rate increases this year. And then that will ultimately, if inflation picks up, long-term rates are going to start to rise as well, which they have been doing in general. So in taking into account a increase in rates for the sale two, which is probably the prudent way to look at it, the total debt service paid on the sale two, the two-bond sales option, you're going to be at 201 total debt service cost versus 182 million. So it's, with that assumption, you're $18 million, $17 million less by doing one. So, yeah, sure.
Just real quick. So reading the annotations on this, it says you assumed a current interest rate increase plus 63 basis points, and then presenting it's at 75. So I assume you use 63?
63.
Okay. So, and that's just kind of curious about that number. Second, I'll ask the stupid question, because my wife is not here to correct me. This is her world. For the, for sale one, you're projecting a 1.64 to 1, the debt service?
Correct.
Why? I guess the question is, why would sale one, why would the rates for sale one be different from the rates for an overall 120? Wouldn't they be for the same length and at the same projected interest rates?
It is. And so it's different for a couple of reasons. One is that you would have, even though they're at the same time, each sale has a little bit of a different amortization. So when you, the bonds are going to be structured and layered in a little bit differently to make room for future. So what happens with the 120, you actually have more bonds paying off sooner, because you're establishing that tax rate, which is great. So you pay less interest, and by spreading the two out, you're going to be, you know, there's more principal out longer that would have a higher interest rate.
Got you. So by doing, by doing them in two tranches, you're, you've got to push out...
Right.
For the first, which is less efficient. Thank you very much.
That's exactly right. So then our last piece here was just to give you a sense on the timing of all of this. And so if approved tonight, that really kicks off into full gear the schedule for the, for the bond sale. You know, the influx right now is scheduling the rating meetings with Moody's and Standard and Poor's. That'll happen either the week of, that's mentioned up here, or maybe sometime in the beginning of August, depending on when that gets locked down of availability for all the various participants. Then once we receive those ratings, LA County has to approve this financing. That's just part of their customary procedures. Once that gets done, then the preliminary official statement gets distributed to investors, and then the bonds are going to be sold the week before Labor Day. And then two weeks after that, the bonds will close and the funds will be available in, at LA County for your construction to begin or expenditures to begin. As far as the sale of the bonds go, we are going to be taking a look at that. You know, we just had a June election date this year, and so a lot of school districts passed some significantly sized bond measures. So one of the things we take a look at is looking at the forward calendar and trying to slot in your financing when, you know, it's going to have great competition and, you know, look real attractive to investors, get you the lowest interest rate. So that date may change a week earlier, a week later, just depending on a couple of things. But, you know, I would say by the time at the end of August, it's likely that we'll have, have the bonds sold for you and be ready for you to move forward with your projects.
I have one question, which I think you were trying to see if we wanted to ask in the middle of it, and it's really, I think, for our staff, which is, I think this is for the benefit of anyone who's watching and also for the rest of the board who doesn't sit on the Financial Oversight Committee or the Facilities Committee, which I happen to, and I happen to sit on both. Could you just share briefly, in an overview kind of a way, what the projects are that are going to cost all this money and that you're going to be doing in a very short period of time?
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. So as we've talked about over the last couple of years, we're in a period of ramping up. We've been doing a lot of design and permitting for our projects. We're now under construction on the Malibu High School project, which you may recall, Measure BB has a shortfall and will be funded out of ES primarily. So that's underway right now. We're looking at, that's a $54 million job. It's anticipated to be complete the end of 2019. So obviously, we'll be spending money pretty quickly on that. When we're, the big, the bulk of this, the bulk of this 120 million is going to be the work at San Mo High on the Discovery Building. You may recall that's a 112 million dollar estimate for construction. We're planning on starting construction in early 2019, and it'll be about a 30-month project. So if you, the quick math would be, well, 30 months into 112, and comes out somewhere between three and four, closer to four. But one thing to remember is that it's not linear. We don't have a consistent amount that we pay every month. Almost every project follows a bell curve. This is an aggregate of those bell curves, this schedule that you have, which was page six in the, in the presentation, which I could go back to. So again, each of these is, each of these are an aggregate of all of the projects we have going, but the big ones are going to be Malibu High School, excuse me, certainly Santa Monica High School, Discovery Building, the JAMS project will be going forward, and of course, we've got our HVAC projects, our window pane and floor projects, all the other projects that you frequently hear about. Does that cover what you're looking for?
And so you expect to complete all of that within the next three years?
Not necessarily, but I expect to utilize this 120 million well before the next three years. The remainder of ES will need to be sold in order to complete the projects that we're talking about.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Ralph?
Just, Steve, just to follow up, I know your answer, John's. The, typically, they're, we're sold in smaller increments. Is it a three, it's three years time period that the funds have to be spent after they're sold?
I think you have to have had a reasonable expectation of spending the funds within the three years...
Right.
In order to avoid arbitrage. You could probably answer that better than me.
Great. Welcome.
Since I'm here, I might as well jump up. James Worszyniak at Jones Hall, Bond Counsel to the District. So nice to be with you tonight, and your staff had it exactly correct. It's a reasonable expectations test. So you want, and when you issue those bonds, the IRS is giving the district a tax subsidy. People that buy the bonds aren't going to pay interest, federal income tax on it. So the IRS wants you to have a reasonable expectation of spending the dollars within three years. So we will help, we'll work with staff, have a drawdown schedule, much like this slide six, but three years is a reasonable expectation. It's not an absolute.
And so, Steve, starting like the San Mo project is going, you know, what happens in the future to complete that project is separate from this, we will move ahead and...
Yes.
And that's why we have the reasonable expectation of spending these funds.
Yeah, we have a reasonable expectation with spending these funds based on the assumption that we will start in early 2019 with the Discovery Building and mid-2019 with the JAMS Performing Arts Center, and again, the rest of our projects going forward.
Thank you, Ralph. John?
I think this is for John with an H. So one concern that we had, or one question we had, and we get to it a little bit with this one bar graph, but with the bigger issuance of 120 million, how are we pushing past that $30 per 100,000 with a larger issuance versus a smaller one? As a consideration for our taxpayers.
Sure. So the, we have a, actually have a nice luxury here where, you know, if we go back to here, this slide on page four. So this is what happens if, if no bonds are issued. You have a tax rate in 2019, you know, right here, which is just under, which will be about $27 to $28, somewhere in that range, depending on how AV grows. And then layering on the new debt service right here, in that year, we actually have a lot of flexibility to estimate. And by the time we get to actually the final structure, we'll know what the assessed valuation is, and so we can lock in, you know, what this year's, what 18, 19, but the tax won't hit until actually 19, 20. But we'll have a really good idea of giving you enough cushion where it won't exceed that $30.
I guess, and then the follow-up to that would be, if, you know, we've been talking about going out with a potential bond measure this fall, would a larger offering this year have any impact on that going forward in terms of impact on taxpayer? 60 versus 120? Or is that...
No, I don't believe so, because you would still be doing the tax rate at the same level, even if it was a 60 versus a 120 here.
Doesn't impact on this part? It wouldn't be on that.
No, not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Melody?
I have one question.
Oscar?
Can you tell, can you tell, just, I mean, voters in Santa Monica, obviously, there's a lot of discussion in terms of how much per parcel we're talking about. Can you just explain to like, I think you said 28, 29, is that what you're, is that what you're referring to?
I'm sorry, the last part?
Yeah. What's the cost to the taxpayers?
Sure. So the tax rate for this measure currently is $27.70 per 100,000 of assessed value. So, you know, you would just have to take a look at, for any taxpayer, just to take a look at your tax bill, see what your assessed value is, and just do the math there. It'd be likely for most in Santa Monica will be higher than $27.70 for this measure as it's a, it's a community that has a high assessed value, single-family presence.
Thank you.
So with all that said, we're actually making the recommendation that the board approve Resolution Number 1750.
Thank you, Melody. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Moved by Ralph. Thank you. Seconded by Lori. This is a roll call vote. Is there any further discussion before we vote? We'll move to that vote now. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that's a unanimous decision. Thank you, Melody. Thank you, Dr. Droudi. That now brings us, friends, to our discussion item for this evening, which is our discussion of the district advisory committees, their end-of-year reports. We have D-LAC tonight, health and safety, and also VAPA, VAPA DAC with us. I'm going to take these in order as they're presented on our agenda, which is D-LAC first, unless staff tells me otherwise. D-LAC first, all right. Dr. Mora, welcome. We've allotted, friends, 15 minutes for each of the three. Each gets 15 minutes, and thank you.
So good evening, Board President, members of the board, Dr. Droudi, cabinet and guests. This evening, I am before you, representing our D-LAC committee. Our president wasn't able to attend this evening due to work obligations. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of our D-LAC members for the support that they've provided this year, especially with the shifts that have taken place and the really clear focus on addressing the mandated topics and focusing on EL programs. As part of advocating for the improvement of EL programs, our D-LAC members really expressed a keen interest in learning more about how to make recommendations at the site level. So in response to this, our team developed... So in response to this, our team developed a workshop where parents reviewed school data, connected possible recommendations and suggestions to the research on high-quality EL programs, and then practiced writing recommendations that would then be shared with their site ELAC, that then would then, that then would lead to a conversation with the school site council and the principal in relationship to any said recommendations. This was a new activity that took place for our D-LAC that really focused on ensuring that they were completing their responsibilities, and it really highlights what we call "learning by doing," actually engaging in the work, unpacking the information, and having our parents participate in the activities that will build their capacity. So I'm really excited to be able to share this, this particular workshop, that then the D-LACs that would want to see come back every year so that they can hone in their own practice and be better advocates for their students and, and other, and other families. So I want to again thank our families for their continued support on the D-LAC. They donate countless hours in advocacy, not only for their children, but for the, for other children as well, and for the board for their ongoing support in engaging our families more authentically. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mora. Thank you, Maria Yaralias on there. Maria?
No, thank you, Dr. Mora. I think it was, it was great to have you there and especially, you know, being fluent in Spanish, and sometimes we needed to go straight into Spanish and kind of explain to, to our families, the representatives that were there. Just one other thing that they did mention is, and if you look at the report, that D-LAC also made recommendations in adding new items in terms of future. One of the big pieces, I guess, they were looking at is their participation and maybe in coming, going to certain conferences that are, that are held, especially when they're here in Los Angeles. CAVE is one of them, which is the California Association of Bilingual Educators. And then the other one is one that is mentioned here also, which is Together We Can, which is, which was, hopefully, we can reinstate that. That was an internal conference that we would have for, for our own families here. And there was one thing that they brought up, and I remember, you know, some years back, you know, I don't know if I was on the board, I think it came even before I was on the board. So something that we hopefully will reinstate, and we made a piece of EL cap, you know, in, in, for the future, so that would be another, the thing. The other is, I know that they were interested in making sure that there was expansion, that some of the D-LAC representatives want to make sure that the after-school tutoring and intervention options be made, really a strong piece in, in the school site council funding. And so that's another, again, another piece that, again, hopefully, with some of the coaching that they'll receive and some of the training that they will receive as part of this committee, they will have more access and be more involved in how decisions are being made in, in school site councils to be able to allow them to maybe bring some of these issues that they brought up to us during, during the discussions, during the meetings. One of the, and just the only last piece is, I know that we have it here, and it's one of the D-LAC recommendations that's made part of the EL cap. But again, their, their, the discussion in terms of the review of the job descriptions of the community liaisons to make sure, to really, to review and, and really make sure that the roles there are going to be there to be really be supportive of, of families in, in the district. I know a lot of times, the, those, the specific liaisons are moved from, to do many, many things, many activities, but hopefully, they will be there to hone mainly to support families, which is, which is part of the EL cap, and hopefully, that, that will be, you know, really pressed on to make sure that it really does happen. So anyway, those were my only comments, and thank you so much. I think this year it went really well, and we finally hopefully defined what the role of D-LAC and, and the fact of, you know, that it's, it's something that, it's mandated and hopefully, that, that is the definitions and the explanations that Dr. Mora gave to the families hopefully will be, be great, and we can move forward to do some really great work for next year. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria. Ralph?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Mora. I think I just want to reiterate, I think what we talked about, our, our study session, I guess that was our last meeting, regarding that there are a series of cultural groups that fall into this category, that we make sure that we are inclusive in reaching out and providing the services, you know, across the district. That's something we probably haven't been as strong, or have noticed the need, so I think we are now, so it'd be great if, you know, as we, as we strengthen our program that way.
And we have included, I know there's been, there was mention of the EL cap, there have been funds allocated for family engagement activities, and part of the work, once our family engagement coordinator joins us, is really building that out, making sure that we are providing multiple opportunities for families to engage in a variety of workshops, making sure that we are reaching out to families that are not, that are English learner families, but whose language may be Chinese, Russian, French, so that they feel that they are included in this process and that they get the support that they need to better assist their child as they matriculate through our schools and reclassify. So yes, there is, we're definitely with, working with that lens in mind to ensure that we are more authentically engaging all of our families, specifically in D-LAC, but beyond that, really be, making sure that the activities and workshops and actions that we are creating provide an option for all families to feel engaged.
Oscar?
Yeah, I just want to support what both board members have stated already regarding where we're, the needs and the areas for growth, and I want to acknowledge Dr. Mora and your staff, you know, for, and Dr. Drati as well, for really, you know, getting ELACs and D-LACs to hone in on, on the mission, you know, of, of what is, what's important, you know, to really focus on English language learners and their needs, and one of the, one of the, and I appreciate all the, all the recommendations made in terms of areas that we need to improve on. One, one that's not there, considering the climate in the country regarding, you know, immigration and some of these issues that, that are, you know, at the national level but have a, a local impact, really focusing, you know, and not knowing how much the need is, but I know that there's some need out there in terms of fear, in terms of trauma, informed counseling, you know, that's a, that's a language appropriate, you know, for students, you know, so focusing on the needs of these students. And I really appreciate your comment about inclusivity, you know, that there's, there's a lot of parents in our community and students in our community that, that can benefit, you know, from, from the new framework that we're launching around parent engagement, especially around ELACs and D-LACs. So thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Are there any further questions for this presentation? Thank you so much. Dr. Mora, thank you. That now brings us to our second of three reports this evening. We'll move to the Health and Safety District Advisory Committee, Tara Brown and Stephanie Lewis, and of course, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Lewis. I am the Chair of the Health and Safety District Advisory Committee. So I would like to first let you know, in case you don't know, for members of the board and the community, we have quite an impressive group on this committee. This group is made up of physicians, attorneys, nurses, and other allied healthcare professionals. So there's quite a bit of brain power in the room when we meet. But I would, what I'd like to first let everyone know, just to we're on the same page, is that our charges for this academic year included focus on anxiety and depression for school-aged children, best practices for handling outbreaks of communicable diseases, focus on drug and alcohol treatment, and awareness of addiction, focus on the wellness policy, and any other issues as directed by the board. So that's what guided us this academic year. One of our key highlights, of course, was to complete the revision and update of the wellness policy, which had not been visited since 2009. We received approval from that from the board earlier this year, and this was vital to outlining our goals for promoting education, physical activity, and overall student wellness, and really to ensure that there was continuity of these standards in all of our schools. We also added some key community and school district members to our boards as regular attendees, and we feel that this was important to strengthen our knowledge as a committee of what's going on in the community and what the pressing issues are of our students. So we are currently looking at the data from the Youth Wellness Needs Assessment that was given out towards the end of the school year. That is going to be analyzed and with the help of Julie Lawton, to give us some guidance next year in terms of where our focus should be. We feel like that data is going to be really important to get a pulse on what is most pressing for our students, our faculty, our parents, and really hone in on what charges we need to focus on the most for next year. We also would like to continue meeting with some key principals in the school district. We met with Dr. Antonio Shelton in the spring to get some ideas of what's going on at Sam O'High, what his concerns are, his needs, and how our committee could best help in, and address some of those issues. So we'd like to continue with the charges that I mentioned just a few minutes ago, and we'd like to also add one, which includes focusing on site emergency responses for crisis situations. Given the current climate and the issues that we're having in our own community as well as across the nation, we really feel like this is important to add this, since we are a Health and Safety Committee. This would address some of those safety concerns, of course, looking at it from a health and wellness perspective, as school site safety in the environment is part of the wellness policy. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Maria?
No, 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 thank you. I think that the first thing, I guess, just as comes up, and you're talking about particularly in our community because of the incidents that happened this last weekend, so that I don't know whether there's anything that we can maybe work more as, as a community to work with maybe the hospitals and, and other agencies in the city to really give more support on families, and I know certain families might have the insurance that might be covering, you know, when they have mental health issues or whatever, or, you know, that they can get those services, but for those that, that don't have that, that coverage, that we, at some one point, come up with maybe referrals or referral lists that maybe we can have ready within the district so that we can distribute that to families.
That certainly was a concern of, of our committee as well, and I think the addition of Anna Yara from Youth and Family Services Coordinator related to SMPD. We also regularly have some SMPD officers that attend our meeting. I think that, in addition to Liz Charette, the Senior Administrative Analyst for Youth and Family, and Julie Lawton, of course, from our Mental Health and Wellness Counselor in the district, those are really some key members that I think are going to help guide us to answer your very question, because we have the same questions.
Okay. And just the other piece that, that, that Oscar, I think this is what would be most appropriate in terms of the situation with everything that's happening with now with the immigration issues and the, and just the safety and just the fear that's prevalent now in the community regarding that, and if there's anything that we, at least if anything, we can, we can be more vocal in having any kind of town halls that we can, again, bring and present to our community, the safety mechanisms that our school district, or the whole city really as a whole, the whole community as a whole, supports these families here. So that's agreed.
Thank you, Maria. Laurie?
I have a quick, quick question. Thank you very much for the report and for the work. I think it's really a good focus and really good, and it's, it's more of a question, I think, internally, it's a housekeeping question, because I think the addition of Anna, Liz, and Julie is a terrific one, because it really links us to what's happening on the ground and to the city, to Cradle, to Career, to the Police Department, to youth. It's a wonderful addition. Have we added them internally as members of the committee so we kind of count, I don't mean count by number, although that's true too, but?
Anna, I don't believe is a, is an official committee member, but she is one of, a regular guest.
To be like a resource person or something like that?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. I mean, either way is fine, I think, I just, it said committee member, so I'm just trying to keep our sort of record straight, but either way, the fact that they're there is what's important.
Correct. And at the end of the report, I list the DAC members, but then I also have community services representatives, and Anna is listed, as well as Suzanne Post, as the community service representative.
Right. Okay, okay. Just, I just want to, actually, Sarah, since you're the keeper of the, of the lists, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Oscar.
And it, I don't know if it's a question for you or for the superintendent regarding the substance abuse, I guess there's an analysis going on. I see that there is a policy being reviewed and all that, but there's more than that, right? There's, there's an analysis or a, a report that the board is, is expecting at some point? Is that, that's what we, yeah? Okay. All right.
Maybe the only thing I would add is, as I mentioned earlier, earlier today, I'm going to be engaging some conversations with the new police chief and some key stakeholders just around the safety of our schools and, and I think it'll, first, it'll be just us throwing out ideas of things that we can continue to look at or readjust, but I would like to, at some point after that's done, involve you all. At the beginning of the year, normally go to the different DACs anyway, maybe I'll bring that information to you in the first year.
That would be great.
Thank you, Dr. Drati. John?
Yeah, just super quickly, and I hope this isn't DAC overreach by me asking this, but I know that from the recession 10 years ago to now, one of the big places where we've lost support onsite is in counseling. So I'm just, I'm just hopeful that when you report back next year and you're doing your research next year, any, any feedback of, of gaps that you guys are identifying or places where you see kids are really, if there's a cohort really falling through the cracks, that communication would be really valuable moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Great, thank you. We really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you for your service. That brings us to our VAPA DAC, our Visual and Performing Arts folks, and I see many of those folks are here tonight. Dr. Mora?
So thank you so much. At this point, I would love to introduce our co-chair, Janice Gabbard, who will be facilitating our presentation, and thank all of our VAPA DAC members who are here to provide support. It's, it's been a pleasure for me to be able to be a part of this DAC and learn about the amazing work that they've been supporting through the years. So I would invite Ms. Janice Gabbard up to the podium, and she will share our highlights and report.
We have them here on our laptops and...
We're trying really hard to, to get into the 21st century.
Okay, so I've written really big so that I don't have to use my glasses, that way I can actually see you when I look up. So I hope it works. Good evening, Superintendent Drati and school board members and district leaders. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? First of all, we'd like to thank you all for your support throughout the years of the elementary through high school music classes that have brought great pride and recognition to our students, teachers, and families here in the S-M-U-S-D. This valuable experience for our youngest students in particular enriches the elementary academic curriculum and broadens the educational scope and intellectual rewards offered to these students. It also encourages their satisfaction and success in a school environment. Internationally recognized excellence for our district that is repeatedly acknowledged through adjudicated performance awards and scholarships is the result that emerges from the extraordinary depth and breadth of ongoing community educational support, starting at the elementary level, sustained and developed all through middle school, and carefully honed throughout the challenges of adolescence and high school. We have indeed an abundance of riches. Now I'd like to call your attention to the report, because it has been a bit reorganized to facilitate your understanding of the VAPA DAC's findings and efforts in the district's visual and performing arts education. Beginning on the first page with our charges, I'd like to call your attention to our activity in support of a comprehensive arts education program offered to all district students. On the second page, we have a series of charts illustrating the percentage of students in one or more arts disciplines. 100% of the elementary students are in one of the, one or more of the arts disciplines, and we have 76% of middle school students and 74% of high school students. But as you can see, the percentage of students in each of the four disciplines varies as they grow. Interestingly, the percentage of visual arts students precipitously drops from 100% in elementary school to 22% in middle school, and then it goes up to 34% in high school. We're concerned that there is a failure to provide sequential, standards-based arts education when the opportunities in middle school are so drastically reduced from the other... when the opportunities in middle school are so drastically reduced from the elementary school foundation. The middle school years are a poignant transition for all. Nothing is more of a change than the switch from the elementary school one-class environment to the middle school world of switching classes and navigating through puberty and all its emotional upheavals. Maintaining and continuing the art skills, the art skills development during the middle school years enables our students to shine on their own efforts and arrive in high school with the confidence and often extraordinary talent in problem-solving and proactive habits they've discovered while participating in their arts classes. Our highest achievers have a lot of pressure and are stressed about performance in their academic classes while everyone benefits from the sanity balance and self-motivated achievements that they experience in their arts classes. Therefore, we want to call your attention to the value of maintaining the continuity of arts instruction from elementary through high school and hope that the curriculum can be maintained through middle school so they may all enjoy equity in the excellence of arts classes during the school day by credentialed teachers. Now, I'm just sort of going to skip. I'm going to let Zina do some detail on some of the data or commentary in the actual report. But I wanted to billboard that we're very grateful to see that the district is now referring to itself as a STEAM district, a vastly appropriate title for a school district that has long held dear the importance of arts education, recognizing that a strong STEM curriculum is even more effective with the addition of the arts, which are vital to enhancing children's likelihood of success both during school and adulthood. Lastly, just as a matter of housekeeping, if you will, beginning on page 14 of the report is a section we have called Background Information, which is kind of a panoply of information or glossary, if you will, that we keep as a record of the district's VAPA program in this past year and every year, including participation data, calendar access, all the honors that we have for all the various kids that are highly honored in the arts, and also a list of our non-district beneficiaries, benefactors, and the college acceptances, the colleges our kids are going to that are actually going to be in the arts as their major. And we also have some communications information back there in case you're looking for more information. In closing, I'd just like to say that as our community has learned through years of commitment to elementary school music education, these programs develop skills that support student achievements and success in many areas of their lives, during their school years and into their adult careers and lives. We hope the continued expansion of our visual arts, dance, and theater programs will further contribute to the development of healthy and productive adults for tomorrow. I feel very strongly that it is our responsibility to guide these kids into discovering some achievement that gives them pride and confidence in themselves. Sometimes that may be science or math, and sometimes that may be in the arts. Wherever it is, the child becomes a much more functional adult if they have that belief in themselves. As a society, because as a society, we've bought into the idea that education is about training and success defined monetarily rather than learning to think critically and to challenge. We should not forget that the true purpose of education is to make minds, not careers. And thank you for your kind attention. And Zina, we'll give you a few more details.
Thank you. Welcome, Zina.
Janice is the eloquent member of our committee. Thank you again to the board for decades of support for arts education. It was just announced that the Santa Monica Malibu is once again, was once again named by the National Association of Music Merchants as one of the best communities in the nation for music education. And before I forget, I wanted to introduce two of our other members who are here tonight, Deborah Barrett and Lydia Moraro, who will probably be speaking to you shortly. On page three of the report, we start looking at what's missing from a sequential comprehensive VAPA program and equitable access. At the elementary level, with PSArts, principals get to select which disciplines are taught, and as you can see from the shaded areas on the charts, not all the kids are getting theater instruction. In the middle schools, JAMS is the only one offering a dance class as part of the regular schedule. Malibu is the only one offering a theater class, and at Lincoln, sixth-grade art is no longer part of the regular class schedule. At the high schools, while Olympic offers classes in music, theater, and art, which is pretty amazing for a school with such a small enrollment, no longer seems to have dance instruction. On page six of the report, the community arts team has been hard at work this year on updating the 2005 Strategic Arts Education Plan and aligning it with the Excellence Through Equity Plan. And so, that team will be presenting the new SMUSD six-year arts education plan to you in the fall. On page seven, recent state legislation, the new single-subject dance and theater credentials will prepare more teachers in those disciplines and help schools increase and improve the quality of those classes. The state is also updating the standards in dance, music, theater, and visual arts while adding media arts to the mix. Regarding new research, USC is examining how music learning may enhance children's emotional and intellectual development. On page nine, the 2018 Otis Report on the Creative Economy of California found that it's generating 1.6 million jobs. And a 2017 article in the Washington Post entitled, "The Surprising Thing Google Learned About Its Employees and What It Means for Today's Students," concluded that, quote, "Among the eight most important qualities of Google's top employees, STEM expertise comes in dead last." The article concludes, "STEM skills are vital to the world we live in today, but technology alone, as Steve Jobs famously said, is not enough. We desperately need the expertise of those who are educated in the human, cultural, and social as well as the computational." On page 11, the DAC urges the district in future to add theater classes during the school day at JAMS in Lincoln, reinstate sixth-grade art during the school day at Lincoln, expand the elementary dance program to additional grade levels, add dance classes at Lincoln and Malibu, establish a small budget for the district-wide art show, explore the impact on art selectives when revising the independent study PE program, provide equitable access to AM classes and summer school classes for VAPA students. This is important so that they can take a VAPA class every year if they wish to, and include at least one year of VAPA classes and one year of foreign language in the high school graduation requirements. This school district has made tremendous progress and has amazing VAPA programs, so you have a lot to be proud of, but there is always room for improvement, and that's what the DAC recommendations are focused on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Zina. Janice, are there questions? And we have a public comment. Maria, I'm going to put myself on the list after Maria. Anybody else? And then we'll go to public. We have a public comment on this particular, on this DAC. Thank you. John?
Board of Education will now hear comments from the public regarding the specific agenda item. As per the Brown Act, board members may not engage in discussion of issues raised during public comment except to ask clarifying questions, make a brief announcement, make a brief report on his or her own activities, or refer the matter to staff. Speakers who have submitted a public speaking card will have three minutes. Speakers and members of the audience are asked to refrain from expressions of support or disagreement that would intimidate other speakers or disrupt the meeting. We have one speaker on this item. She will have three minutes, and it's Lydia Moraro.
Good evening. Pleasure to see you all. I first would like to be very thankful for all the arts in this district. I am very proud of my children being involved in music, and when I hear them play and when I see the joy that they have to play for others, it really makes me feel very hopeful about the future. So, I chose to serve on the VAPA DAC so that I can make sure that as many children as possible benefit from these programs. So, thank you for being such a leader in the arts. I would like to bring your attention tonight to the Summer Get Ahead program. The enrollment in the Summer Get Ahead directly affects the arts because kids have to have room for an additional elective, and right now, there's not a lot of options that the counselors can have. They have an AM possibly, an ISPE, and Summer Get Ahead. This year, my son was 69th on the waitlist for Summer Biology ninth grade, and I was called on Friday, the day before Summer Biology was to start, to tell me that it was a turn. Of course, I had to pay $1,000 to enroll him in Beverly Hills High School so that he could do Summer Biology, and I didn't wait until the day before it starts to make those plans, and he had already been there for a week. So, this summer, I'm driving a few times a day to Beverly Hills, not to mention the expense. So, I would like you guys to think about that, and I understand that Project Eat Away is, you know, we've been given federal funds, and we have to guarantee that the students can do Project Eat Away for four years, but I strongly suggest that students that want to enroll in VAPA, either band or orchestra, for which there is no flexibility as to when the classes are, are considered in the Summer Get Ahead as a priority. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John, I have a question for the speaker. Lydia, did your family consider Santa Monica College as an option for the biology course for your son?
Unfortunately, the dates were not the same as the dates of the Summer Biology that is provided by Samoheit, and we had to make travel plans and, you know, so we had made these plans long ago on those dates.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maria, and then I have myself on the list, and John?
No, no, thank you to the committee. Oh, no, I have, no, 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 no. No, thank you to the committee. I think we have, we've always had a hard working, I've been part of this for many, many years. One of the things that I, that was very fascinating, was great to see this coming year was that we have somebody from the LA County Arts Commission that is assisting, you know, the VAPA to actually help us revamp and redo the strategic plan in the arts that hasn't, you know, was adopted back in 2005, and I think just needed to be more inclusive of the various art forms that hopefully everybody, all the different from elementary to middle and high school can all be part of. But one of the main things that hopefully we will do, and that's one of the things that I think we started the discussion, but hopefully in the next coming year, that we could become more global in terms of the type of, you know, music genres that we, you know, we offer in this district. It's been, for the longest time, been very Eurocentric, and we hopefully will expand that to include more of our world, you know, view, and I'm hoping we've been working on some things that hopefully can announce maybe in the next coming year for 18, 19, in terms of other genres of music that we can offer in this district. I think we've started the processes in the past, but we've liked to hopefully begin to offer some other music pieces, starting at the elementary school. So, I'll leave it at that, and we'll kind of get information as we roll it out sometime, 18, 19 year. So, thank you. But it's been, it's been really good. I think we just, a lot of, like I said, a lot of the parents are there that are there as part of it. My son, my two children were part of the music program, and my daughter, I guess, was the most, one that really advanced with it, and she just loved it. And she still picks up her viola every afternoon and plays it. It's her only time of, that brings her relaxation, you know, from her intensity of life. So, anyway, so, thank you, and we will hopefully have a good 18, 19 year.
Thank you, Maria. I also want to thank the DAC, all the DACs, and thank you for your service, Maria, on the VAPA DAC also. I wanted, as this is an opportunity, I know this is, these are committees to advise us. I didn't want to lose an opportunity to lobby my colleagues on a particular or two of the recommendations there, and also then to echo a call that Maria is stating about the, being more global and the focus or approaching world cultures through our, through our arts programs. First to say, I had this epiphany, which you probably all have already had on this dais. I like to go to all of the different arts events, and I was driving home from one of the end-of-the-school-year events, and I think, I said to someone, I said, "I can remember being a father of younger children and thinking, 'Oh, when my kids get to high school, I want there to be a performing arts high school that they could go to.'" And I had in my head that there had to be this standalone performing arts school, but coming home from one of the events, one of the music events at San Mo High, I thought, "We have a performing arts high school." That is Santa Monica High School in Malibu, and they're incredible opportunities, and then the data that's presented here is, as Zina said, something to be very proud of. And then in my conversations with Tom Whaley and also with Nathan Bernbaum, who I think is a resource person for VAPA DAC, in reflecting on what's going on in the larger community here in Santa Monica, we're really good in the instrumental music and the vocal music and the visual arts, but he will even say, and that's Nathan Bernbaum with the city, that the dance is lacking in our community, and the data shows here. And so, one of the recommendations is to expand dance, and I just want, I'm lobbying for that, my peers here on the board, and particularly a way to, I think, also address one of the concerns that, not concern, but one of the pieces of, or suggestions that Maria is making. When Santa Monica College came in and has now, I think, provided successfully for us the instruction for ballroom dance, the faculty at Santa Monica College, and all disclosures, I'm a professor, but I'm not a professor in dance at the college, have, Santa Monica College has an incredible global dance department and provides incredible, I mean, really better than what you get at like UCLA or even at USC with regards to the cultural world dance that is there. And I know that they are on the ready to expand what they do. In fact, there's an interest in being able to provide global dance as a part of the curriculum in our schools, and I don't think it would take much to expand the program that we have on the, I just can't believe things just fly out of my head like this, on ballroom dance to include global dance as a component of that. And they stand on the ready. In fact, many of the men, women, and others who are teaching our kids at this level are actually trained not in ballroom but in some global world dance. And so, it wouldn't be difficult for us to expand. I see Dr. Morris heard me say this before. And then I know that we're talking about expanding hip hop to sixth grade, so I think we're eager to learn about that. But I would just want to say, I dream about a day where the dance is at that 30% level of what we saw for the high school levels, and I have to echo again too that we've, this is John's thing, the master schedule and the look at opportunities to be able to provide kids who want to be both in a foreign language and also be in the arts and also committed to, you know, science and technology. We need to do more to be able to provide greater opportunities with regards to the arts. Thank you for listening to me. That's me on my soapbox and a push for dance. And we go now to John.
Hello. So, I was going to not speak just because of time, but I'll take two minutes, three minutes because it's a, well, because it's, I think things need to be said. If they don't say them, then nobody knows where we stand. This is a very personal thing to me as someone who has worked in entertainment for 30 years, who worked as an actor, worked as a writer, worked as a musician. I mean, I wish we had schools, this is my wish, I wish we had schools where kids didn't have to say, "I'm a dancer, I'm a baseball player, I'm an actor." I wish we had schools where kids could come in and without having to make a choice, had exposure to all these different things. So, they didn't have to say, "Oh, I don't want to take dance, I want to do this." We had to. We had to take, in seventh grade, we had to take dance. We had to touch a girl and dance because it was age-appropriate at that time. In ninth grade, if you weren't doing this, you built sets. You didn't have to be on stage, but you did something. I wish we had programs set up that gave kids this broad exposure to everything, and we got away from this age of specialization that we have in our society right now, which is, if you're not playing baseball 13 months a year by age seven, forget about it. So, that's my wish, and that's where I would love to see. I know it's impossible. We have, it's a dream, it's aspirational dream, but when we talk about having these offerings, I would love to find ways to get more and more kids exposed to more and more things without them having to feel like, "I'm an actor, so therefore I must do this program." So, that's my dream for the day.
Thank you, John. Lori?
I love what you just said. I wasn't thinking of saying that exactly, but I think Maria was getting toward that in a different way, or it's a different, it's a similar, it's a related point. I do think that what we do here, I mean, everybody knows it, we do it really well in the music, in music in particular. You know, we're renowned everywhere. So, it is not a knock in any way on what we do do to say that there are all kinds of other genres that are not explored, and since we're, I hate to do these personal anecdotes, but since we're speaking to it personally, I grew up with a, my father was a folk singer and a songwriter, and... and a, and a songwriter. And you could go through our schools, and you wouldn't even know that there was anything like folk singing, or what that even is. And that's just one among a number of things that we don't touch on, and that speaks partly to John's point as well. So it's great that we're little by little adding things in, but I do think it's something that we need to be exploring, because we want to expose kids to more. And it doesn't mean they have to say, oh, I'm gonna be a this, and started in first grade. And so it's partly about exposure and sort of, I was just, I was writing myself notes, like, how do we talk about world cultures, whether it's dance, whether it's music? It's also all a little bit related to our language, foreign language conversation, too. And maybe there are some ways to, I don't know, you can't hook everything together, and you can't do everything, but you can offer some more things. So I, I, and I just want to also kind of echo the point that I think both Xena and Janice made about, I mean, it's a similar point, but on a different issue. We need to continue to improve our STEM offerings, and engineering, and coding, and math, and all those things are important in the world, or in the world that some people will be entering. But there is no question that the skills and the life skills and the being, being a human being, as well as the actual fine arts skills that you get from our fine arts programs, are critical to being the kind of citizen that we want to graduate from our schools. So I would just want to echo that point that they made very well. And I, and I think, I'm thrilled that people in our district and who advise us feel that, and I always feel that every time that gets raised. So just wanted to say that, too. So thank you all for what you do.
Maria, then Oscar.
No, no, just to follow up, and just the last thing I wanted to say, I think, Tom, you picked on a real good point. And it's usually, the arts is always like something extra the students do in, in our, in our district. But we, we don't realize that that's a performance, and that's actually a job, that's a profession. And in my, my year when my daughter graduated in 2011, I, I saw about a dozen of them going to UCLA in the arts, and now there are professors are now out there doing the arts, and the performers, and whatever they may be in their areas of the arts, they're out there working in, in the area. And that's something that maybe we can look into in terms of the career education piece that comes with it. Come, because there's a lot of opportunities, not just, you know, like, you can stay acting, but what can you do with it? You know, you can, you can major in theater, what can you do with it? And you can do physical therapy with, with theater. And there's so many options that are now available in the arts for, for, for various professions, that I think it's something that we should explore as part of that process. It's not just the arts, but it's arts and it's a profession.
Thank you, Maria. Oscar?
I just want to, first of all, thank you all for your advocacy on this issue, because it's kept the school board on point in terms of putting our money where our mouth is. And so that's, that's why we have the strong programs that we have around art, music, everything that we have is because of the advocacy of our parents, and, and the will of the, of this governing board that historically has always supported, you know, music, arts, and on these offerings. I want to echo and just support what everybody has said, when, as a student in our school, in our school district, we, we brought hip hop into the schools without a program. So that's another thing that can happen, is the young people, if we give them resources, all, all my sixth grade teacher gave me at Will Rogers Elementary School, he, he allowed us to keep a cardboard box so that we can spin on our back, you know, and that was like, we, and we, and we, and we, and it kept us busy, it kept us out of trouble, you know. Exactly, yeah. Luke, uh-huh, Fakaris, Mr. Fakaris. So it's really important to just, when you see something that young people want to do, so this idea of culturally responsive, you know, if that's what the young people are hip, you know, to, then let's go ahead and support that, and we can see that really grow. I, I'm, I'm happy to say that this Saturday, where the Pico Ethan Family Center is releasing its six CD compilation, and these are all high school students, mostly Samo High, but a lot from Olympic as well. And we invite everybody to come see that, to see their performances. But one thing I've learned from the young people that I didn't really understand, and very similar to what Board Member Leon Vasquez just stated, is the therapeutic value of doing the music. When I talk to these young people, a lot of them that go through a lot of struggles, they say, when they're in there making music, they can forget about all their problems. It's, so in terms of the mental health issues that young people are facing in our community, it's really important to give them this, you know, it's, it's more than just, it is a career pathway, it's art, entertainment, and technology. But then it's also the therapeutic value of giving young people these options for them to express themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. I can't control myself. I have to reflect on two things that you just said, you and Lori and John, and mentioning that about the well-being, and thinking about your dad and folk music, and what that meant as resistance to a certain kind of politic and what was unfolding in the world, and thinking about how often artists and folks who have artistic sensibilities and perspectives are able to, to use a language to help us see in ways we haven't seen before. And so it's sad to me that students wouldn't know the, the, the role that music, particularly folk music played, or we think about rap as a genre, and kind of the resistance, too, and what's happening there. It's remarkable, right, that, that we're having to remind ourselves of this. And then I want to say that, as John was mentioning, in his dream world, that you'd have, every student would be engaging and building a set. Dr. Droudi leaned over to me, and he said, remember, we're having this conversation about interest-based and project-based learning. I mean, you could be learning about physics, and math, and science, and the construction of sets. And, I mean, there are so many ways in which we could be integrating the arts into kind of that education. So I think that the VAPADAC folks know that they've got a board that's very supportive. As you can tell, we've gone well over our 15 minutes there on that. That, that's not to mean that we're not supportive of the others, because we absolutely are. But this is, you can tell, something that's very important to this district. So thank you very much to everybody who was here this evening, to our one public speaker. We'll now move on. Dr. Droudi, is this good? Ralph, we're good? And so that now brings us to our major action items, and brings us to item 9A, which is the adoption of the 2018-19 Local Control Accountability Plan, lovingly known, as I've said before, as LCAP. Dr. Mora.
So good evening again. I don't have a presentation for you this evening, I just have a few items I would like to address. As we all know, we previewed the LCAP on May 31, and we had our public hearing on the 19th. So today, it's, I just wanted to give an update. I did receive feedback from Laco this last Friday evening, and there were no substantial changes needed to the content. But there were some adjustments that I needed to make in relationship to our estimated actuals. So if you were to look at the LCAP that was uploaded, you would, if you go line by line, you would see that our actuals are, have been updated. This is per Laco's feedback. And I also included an expenditure summary at the very end of our LCAP. I do want to just extend gratitude to Melody Kennedy and her team, Gerardo Cluz and Elena Perez, for their support in getting these estimated actuals updated as per their request. So it really took a team effort, because it was given to me on Friday, and we got together and made these adjustments per that feedback. So if the board has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything that might be coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Mora. It looks like we may be ready for a motion. Lori?
I'll move adoption of the LCAP.
Thank you. And seconded by Maria, this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Thank you very, very much, yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Sarah, that's unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Mora.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for all the, for the good work.
Can we talk about arts with the extra time?
Oh, now we have more time, we want to go back to the arts. I was, I'm just, I'm just, I was, I was parodying John, I was.
What about health and safety there?
Two times, come on.
But health and safety is related to that, right? It's all about, as we, this brings us to item 9B, which is the adoption of the 2018-19 budget. Yeah. Welcome back.
Good evening again. We don't really necessarily have any updates either tonight. We can actually look at the presentation if you'd like, so that we can have conversations about pieces that we have talked about on May the 31st and June 19th. Would you like for me to pull it back up?
Go ahead. No. What we do, I know we have a question or two?
I think we do.
But I think that, that we just will, we'll pepper you with those questions, is that okay?
All right, let's go for it.
I don't know if I like that word pepper. I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna ask you these questions. John?
Okay, I'll go first. Thank you. So the, the big item that we talked about two weeks ago was the, the allocation. We, we know we have a $900,000 deficit every year in our food services. Melody put in an additional $700,000 for some potential ways to address this deficit. I think we did ourselves a slight disservice. God, forgive me, I'm, I'm doing this the wrong way. So flat-out question. So when we allocate that additional $700,000 into, is it Fund 13?
Yes.
14, 13?
13.
Fund 13, we are not necessarily saying we are spending that 700,000 on a, something that was presented two weeks ago, but we are allocating that money so that we have the ability to spend that during the coming school year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other questions before we move to a vote? Lori?
I own, my only, I hesitate to even ask it, but my only question is, that money ultimately is gonna, is really a, most of it, not all of it, is a capital expenditure.
Correct.
Well, there's professional development, there's, but most, what I'm saying, the bulk of it is.
The bulk of it is, because some of it is actually for training and.
Right, so that, that part would not be, but the bulk of it is. So, but when we set it aside here, are we doing it in, out of a capital fund, or out of general revenue? Or how, I mean, I know we had a, sort of a conversation about this before, but I just want to be clear, because I, I think, I, I mean, I totally agree that it should be there, sit there, so that we can, I, I just.
It's a good question. I don't really have a true answer to it at this moment. I wasn't quite prepared for that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think at this moment in time, we're actually, you are right, it will be capital. But I think we have to look at the bond, the, the, the current bond that's there at this point in time, and what we're looking at for Samo High as well, and what we're gonna do with equipment there. And I think that we need to do some actual adjustments. And as we do those adjustments, for now, I would like to see that if we are going to approve the budget tonight, I shouldn't say we, if you are going to approve the budget tonight, that we approve it with, it in Fund 13 at this point, because it does reflect to Fund 13, it is in Fund 13. And one of the issues with Fund 13 is, before we can actually buy equipment or do anything of that nature, we actually have to go through the state of California to, to actually get those things approved as well. We have to get it through approved through you, we have to get it approved through them. So I think I would feel better about just leaving those funds there at this moment. We could transfer them over to capital if that's what we feel that needs to be done. I would like to do a little bit of research on that before I actually answer a question like that at this, at this moment.
Okay, I just, but I really want to urge you to do that, because it seems to me they are capital monies, and we should spend capital monies on capital monies and.
And, and we do have a piece there where we can actually.
Hold on to our operating monies, where we can't.
We do have a piece where we can transfer funds. We're asking you tonight at another item and everything, to be able to transfer funds as appropriate.
Ralph?
So, but Melody, right now, in this budget, it's a general fund line item.
You're correct.
It's not, whether, it might be spent on capital equipment, but as of now, it's a general fund expenditure.
Correct.
We may change that in the future.
You're correct.
Okay. And I think the.
We have flexibility.
Well, we have flexibility every meeting to, to move monies. So, I mean, right?
Correct.
So right now, it's just a general, it's general fund dollars. So, but the other issue about, and I assume that the equipment will be, we're ready to make those purchases in the near future, or are we waiting until there's some further, if we have a subcommittee or further refining what we're moving ahead with before anything is done?
It was my impression that we were actually going to come up with a little bit more of a fine-tuned plan, and that we were asking board members to be a part of that particular subcommittee, so that we could have that conversation, so that we could flush all of these pieces out. One of the things I was actually trying to do is get ahead of things and put that 700,000 towards the, the food services program, and so that we can actually call it out and say, here it is, this is what it, what, what it is there. But one of the things I know that we do want to move on quite quickly, and I want to be very transparent, and I had a conversation with John about this earlier, is we do want to move quickly on getting the, the computer system put in place. We are so antiquated and so behind times of trying to get our, our point of sales piece together, that we are gonna have to work on that infrastructure first, before we can actually do anything else.
And can I give, just as an example for the board, reminding all of us of our, well, we don't need reminding, but I just want to speak, for, one example is that I think Lori asked a very fine question in our last discussion, as to whether or not ovens or, or equipment could be rented rather than purchased. And then we know staff is going to find an answer to that question.
And we've already been looking.
Great. And so I, I think we identified many questions that were recorded, and that the staff is looking for those. And, and then also, I think John has articulated on more than one occasion, the, the focal point in, in good measure being, how do we eradicate that $900,000 deficit that we're running in food services? And for example, the, addressing the antiquated computer system is one way that might allow us to address some of those kind of infrastructural, that's probably not the right word, right?
Structural.
Structural deficit. And, but I was just saying about the infrastructure itself being deficient, and if we can fix that, that maybe that would help with greater sales, those kinds of things. But we are also expecting to have a business plan that's brought to us, that speaks to some of the things like capacity, where the greatest growth could happen, which, which are particular schools, et cetera. So I think the clarifying thing that John was getting to is that, in part, this is a placeholder. We know that this money's going to be set aside here, and that, but there's more work that's gonna be done by staff.
Correct.
To articulate, or not to articulate, but to uncover the questions that were posed by this board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Oscar?
I thank everyone for this discussion, because it's really important. Obviously, a lot of parents here in community are interested in this discussion as well, and how we move forward. And it looks like we're moving forward in the right direction, considering all the debate we had in the last board meeting and in this board meeting, so I'm really thankful. And I really like everything that we're clarifying here in terms of the business plan, and the equipment, you know, all that that goes into it. One of the things that, for me, that's really important is to understand sort of where we're at, and then as we go, and we make the changes, how we, you know, what, how that impacts the bottom line for us, because we want to be able, I mean, one, one theory, but what I heard from Boulder, Colorado, a former superintendent, Chris King, who came from there, said that when they made these changes, more parents bought into the food program. So, so the deficit that we have experienced here historically in our school district, sort of comparing ourselves to what happened in Boulder, Colorado, we started erasing the deficit, because more people started buying into it. And so I want to be able for us to show that if that's the case, you know? And so we monitor it as we go. I think it's gonna be a powerful message for us as a, as an organization, is to understand sort of how these changes benefit, you know, the, the students, but also, you know, our, our organization and our budget. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely agree.
Thank you, Oscar. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the budget, moved by John's. Let me just get a second, and then I'll come right for further discussion. Is there a second? Seconded by Maria. And so we have a first and a second, further conversation. Maria?
One other point, because I think we said, the 700 could be something in terms of capital, or it can be for training. And I think at the discussion that we had the last time regarding this, I think our, our representative from the union wasn't, wasn't in the discussion, Carol. So I'm just hoping that, that we can work in collaboration to maybe have, you know, SEIU participate in the, hopefully, the training of our future, you know, of our, of our workforce, and, and be collaborative about it, so that, so the expense can, you know, could be lessened, so.
We always collaborate.
Okay, all right.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Lori?
And I just want to clarify that you will look toward how you could find, whether it's developer fee money, or whatever kind of capital monies, to make sense of it so that we can transfer the money.
Absolutely.
Because it just does make sense that we don't use operating monies that way when there are other sources of funding for it.
I agree. I agree. And that's definitely a piece I, I, I will most definitely take a look at. If I can push that money back towards our deficit, absolutely.
Great. Melody, could you do that as quickly as, as humanly possible, and maybe get some sort of articulation to us in our Friday memo?
Absolutely.
As soon as you have that information.
No problem.
Great, thank you. Ralph?
Just to prolong the discussion, I guess. But I didn't speak on the VAPA one. And not to be negative about it, is that, it's not about the money, really, I don't think, you know, going towards the structural deficit. It's, it's funds we could use, that we have, that we could use for other things. The structural deficit is about how we spend, you know, funds on an ongoing basis, programs, and it's analyzing all that, so it's not saying, oh, here, we've got this money, that now, it doesn't solve that, it will not solve that problem. So it's, it's saying, you know, if there are other, other funds we can use for, for, for this, it just gives us some flexibility and other things we might like to do on a one-time basis.
Thank you, Ralph. John?
I'll be real quick. I, I think that, this is what I was trying to get at before, but I was trying to keep it as a budget question for Melody, not a speech by John. So speech by John, I believe that we framed this, we.
So, speech by John, I believe that we framed this, we, we could have framed this discussion in two ways. One is an aspirational goal, for what we see as what we want food service to be in our district, and what we want our kids, our students to have access to. But the second one is, we are, we are losing $900,000 every year, because of how we operate our food services. When we're in a time of trying to find ways to reduce this deficit, that 900 is part of our structural deficit. So, if we can use preferably capital, but whatever it's gonna be, to invest, and maybe in a three-year process, find ways of, of nibbling at that 900 while we, you know, while we pay off the investment, those are the kind of decisions we need to make moving forward. And I think it's a different way of phrasing this, it's not as much fun as talking about, hey, we want healthier choices, it's a way of saying, hey, we want a, a sound district. So, it would be great, as Lori said, if there are ways to make sure this is a capital expenditure, and not what Ralph is talking about, but the idea of what we're doing, I think, is right, we can just clean it up a little bit.
Absolutely.
Thank you, John. Oscar?
Lastly, I just want to say that the, it is, it is a one-use funds, you know, it's a one-time use of funds, that's most likely coming from capital, but, but can, can, over time, improve the bottom line for us, you know, bring in, bring in some revenue, and I think it's a very intelligent investment of our dollars, and so I'm very excited that we're moving in that direction, and thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as we move to this vote, I want to say that there's a serious kind of like, particular, where we could look at it, and then look, look at all those plates out there, there's some artwork out there. So there's a, putting the, the, the visual arts, I just want to let the folks know that we see you, we see you. We're now moving to a vote, this is a roll-call vote on, of course, this is item 9B, this is the adoption of our 2018-19 budget. Mr. Mitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Sarah, that's a unanimous vote of the Board of Education. Thank you, and thank you for the families who came out this evening. Thank you, Melody.
Dr. 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 Taviller, just when I'm gonna recuse myself from the next item.
Thank you, Ralph. Ralph is recusing himself from item 9C, which is the revision of board policy and administrative regulation 3290, the acceptance of gifts. Dr. Tav.
Lot of recusing tonight.
So, in an effort to improve the fundraising that the Santa Monica, Malibu Educational Foundation has engaged in since 2013, last, at the last board meeting, staff brought to you a proposal to separate the fundraising in Santa Monica and Malibu. And we had that long discussion about that. So, at that time, you then asked me to come forward with an action item for you guys to be able to do that. So, for us to be able to do that, so there's, there's an order, there's an order by which we have to operate. So, there is an MOU, if, if this was to take place, there is an MOU that we have with the SMEF, Santa Monica, Malibu Education Foundation, that needs to be adjusted. But before we make that adjustment, we have to approve some changes with our administrative regulation and board policy 3290. And so, so you had a chance to review both of those, the AR and BP, and so today is just to, we want to get your feedback, but we need that approval before we move on to the next step, which is establishing a MOU between the next, the two entities that would exist in Santa Monica and, and Malibu, for fundraising.
Thank you, Dr. Tav. Are there any questions for the superintendent? Lori?
Comment, but I can't find, I have to find it first.
Maybe, maybe in order, we can go, as we make those decisions, we can go over AR and BP then.
Yeah, because it's.
Dr. Tav, do you want to begin with the board policy first?
Ah, yes, go, that's, that's the most, that's the most important.
All right, so let's look at board policy 3290 first. This is a three-page document before the Board of Education.
If you have a problem with your computer, if you want to stand back there, look at it.
Thank you, it's been moved by Maria, seconded by John. I have no questions. Are there any other members? Lori's pulling her questions up out of there.
No, I, I actually figured out what my, my question doesn't go to language in the BP or AR, but to the staff report. So, I was asked, I had a conversation, a couple conversations about this paragraph, the second to the last paragraph in the, I guess, shows under com, yeah, under rationale, thank you. About, basically, if either Santa Monica or Malibu raise more money than the currently, the current amount that they need to raise to pay for programs, what did, what do we mean by this paragraph? And so, all I want to do is say that I really hope that happens, and I really do hope that that becomes a problem we have to address.
It's a good thing.
And my view is just that we should say to ourselves and each other, that equity is the umbrella under which all of this falls. And so, should we have that luxury of saying, well, what do we do now? So, one side of the district has raised more money than we have, than we've already, then we'll confront that problem within thinking always in terms of the umbrella of equity, and try and figure out then what that means for whatever amount of money that is. Because it would have to be a significant amount of money, I think, for either Santa Monica or Malibu to say, well, why not, we, we want to do something different than put it into an endowment, or hold it till next year and see how much we raise. So, I say, I hope we have that problem to confront, but I just want to be clear that we're not backing off our commitment to equity in any way in this change, and should that happen, that's how we will confront that eventuality.
Thank you, Lori.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, let's move to the AR, are there any questions there? Maria and John, I'll assume that the AR and board policy were both part of your moving and seconding. Let's move to a roll-call vote. Mr. Mitcher has recused himself from this item. Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre is returning. He is the best. Thank you, Oscar. Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and so that is a five in favor, one, no. One abstention. No, Jess is teasing you. Thank you. Thank you to SMEF staff for being here too. See, thank you very much. And Mr. Mitch, we'll wait for Mr. Mitcher to return. There he is. Welcome back, Ralph. This now brings us to item 9D, friends, which is the adoption of resolution 1748, temporary interfund cash transfer, and Melody foreshadowed this, I believe.
Yes, I did foreshadow this one. Let me see, really quick, grab my, this is the inter, interfund transfer? Basically, it's a resolution, I can actually read that, if you'd like.
Thank you, please do.
Whereas, I'm sure, I'm sorry, let me start over. Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District Resolution, Temporary Interfund Cash Borrowing. Whereas, the state continues to defer apportionment payments to school districts, and, whereas the district may temporarily find that they do not have enough cash to meet their fiscal obligations in the general or other operating funds, due to the shortage of funds created by the deferral of apportionment payments, or lack of authorizing state adopted budget, which delays the release or, excuse me, release of other state funds normally received during this period. And whereas, the district may temporarily borrow, as identified under Education Code 42603, cash from funds of the district not to exceed 75% of available resources in any fund, and, whereas, the district cannot use the funds approved by voters under the provision of Proposition 39, and now therefore, the governing board hereby approves, I believe, this blank, this blanket resolution to authorize the superintendent or the, or their designee to use, the use of an aggregate cash balance in district funds, except funds received as a result of Measure BB or Measure ES, if the, the need arises. So what we're asking for is, for you to actually adopt this.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? It's moved by Oscar, thank you, Oscar, seconded by Lori. We'll move to a roll-call vote. Mr. Mitcher is away from the dais. Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so that is a five, I got, why am I cannot able to count? It's five to zero, Sarah, thank you. Thank you, Melody. That takes us now to item 9E, which is to adopt Measure R, parcel tax, the 2018-19 annual plan. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Maria, is there a second? Lori? Thank you. We'll move to a roll-call vote if there are no questions. And, Mr. Mitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez? Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, Sarah, that's a unanimous adoption of the annual plan. Item 9F is the adopt, is for us to consider adopting Resolution 1749, which is the annual delegation of administrative authority to process routine and non-routine budget revisions, adjustments, and transfers for the 2018-19 year. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Lori. Moved by Lori, seconded by Maria. Again, this will be a roll-call vote. Mr. Mitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
Sarah, I'm also a yes, another unanimous vote of the Board of Education. This now brings us to our last major action item of the evening, which is item 9H. This is classified non-represented employees with a one-time payment, this is the management, supervisory, and confidential employees. Is there a motion to approve this item? Thank you, Oscar, and seconded by John Keen. This is a roll-call vote. Mr. Mitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Lieberman?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that's a unanimous vote on item 9H. This now brings us to general public comments.
I gotta pull up the, I'm sorry, we moved way too fast there, and I don't have my handy guide here. Public comments is the time when members of the audience may address the Board of Education, items not scheduled on the meeting's agenda. As per the Brown Act, members may not engage in discussion or issues, or cough, while, except ask clarifying questions, make a brief announcement, or make a brief report on his or her own activities. Speakers will have three minutes. Speakers and members of the audience are asked to refrain from expressions of support or disagreement that would intimidate other speakers or disrupt the meeting. We have two speakers tonight, they are Carol Carte McNeely and Sarah Braff.
Thank you, Superintendent Tav and Board members. I hope I can read this within three minutes. And first of all, I'd like to thank you, Superintendent Tav, for your comments under your report. I am extremely grateful for the collaborative working relationship we have with you, and much of the leadership in this district. Yesterday's U.S. Supreme Court issued a decision in a legal case that aims to weaken our voice and our power to fight for better wages, good jobs, and better services for our students and families we serve in our communities. The only goal of the Janus versus Assme case is to cut off resources from unions by getting workers to opt out of their union and not pay dues. This action and decision will not stop us or our fight for working families, for our children, and our grandchildren. Unions have been painted as a painful evil in our economy by the right-to-work advocates and the corporate owners, such as the Koch Brother, Koch Brothers, and other corporate leaders. We will not let them lie to our membership. This attack against unions, which is an attack on every public employee worker, means that the benefits and job protections we currently have are threatened, and it is intended to weaken our voice and power in every discussion and every negotiation process on behalf of working families. As union members, a majority of us have basic benefits that most workers do not enjoy, like vacation pay, healthcare benefits, paid sick days, floating holidays, seniority, overtime compensation, the right to negotiate over layoffs, a fair process to protect against unjust termination. The court's decision yesterday threatens the loss, are part of all these protections for workers and their families. In SEIU Local 99, our childcare providers, who provide critical early learning and care to our youngest children, have been fighting for 15 years to win collective bargaining rights in this state, could now face an even harder battle to win this basic right to win respect for their profession. We only need to look at our history books and understand just what has been fought for at a very high cost by men and women who formed unions to be able to have the benefits and protections we have today. Do we need to negotiate more? Of course. We want wage increases that allow us to care and provide for our families, more full-time work, healthcare benefits for all, equal job protections and living wages, not just for ourselves, but for working families in our communities. Together, in our union, we can continue to be that united voice to fight for a more just society for all. And sadly, that's exactly why unions are under attack. The Janus versus Assme case was funded by national anti-worker rights, who want to weaken unions across the country. The people behind this attack include CEOs of major corporations that support unregulated charter schools and private companies, eager to replace public workers for our contractors. I know I'm running out of time, okay. After yesterday's court decision, we know this attack will continue through conversations from outsiders ta, targeting our membership with comments like, give yourself a raise and drop out of the union. Our members will see notices in their mail, on TV, radio, and social media. People may even come to our front doors. It is important we do not allow ourselves to be fooled. Members need to understand that dropping union membership means throwing away the strength of the voice that secured all the protections that current, they currently have, and have enjoyed to the benefit of their families and their future. This decision has direct impact, not just on our current contract negotiation and campaigns, but into our future. Without the strength of our numbers, we become invisible, and not just in the workplace, but in our communities. We need to protect the economy of the middle class, which was built and sustained through union jobs and union membership not so long ago. Without a strong union voice, cutbacks in the workplace become so much easier for many employers. We can and will fight back. We will do that by recommitting ourselves to being union members, and to defend our union, our paychecks, benefits, and our voice in the workplace. We'll have conversations with our membership, and in our communities, and tell our personal stories of struggle, and what having a union job has done to change and improve our ability to provide for our families, to grow in our communities, and to lift others up when needed. We will not back down, rather, we will stand stronger to ensure the protection of a better future for our children and grandchildren. We will not be silenced, ever. We will recognize and collaborate with our community leaders, who hold the same beliefs and truths for social, economic, and restorative justice, access to, and equity of services, dignity, respect, and honor of cultural diversity in our workplace and communities. We will fight to honor and protect the history of unions, and we will make the people remember the horrors and tragedies, such as the Triangle Fire, because there was no union to voice, no union voice to protect the well-being and lives of workers. None of us can afford to forget, and none of us can afford not to tell these stories. Our light and our voice will continue to rise and grow in strength. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening. Thank you again, Dr. Tav and the board, for all of your support, for understanding that labor and management must remain together. For decades, public and private sector unions have been under attack and smeared with misleading and outright false propaganda regarding the unions' activities and agendas, including fake hyperbole about how people are forced to join the union and fired when they do not. This is simply not true. To be clear, we have, and we will continue to encourage and advocate for all employees to become union members, because at the Santa Monica, Malibu Classroom Teachers Association, we know we are at our strongest when we work together for our students, our community, and ourselves. We all have a passion for education and a deep respect for this vocation, yet somehow this profession and others is being viewed as low-paid martyrdom, and this is not acceptable to us. The Janus decision is about taking away our freedom and power to stand together in negotiation. It hampers our ability to make public schools and public services truly great. But do not forget that our main source of political strength has always come from our members and our community. There are hundreds of thousands of people across the state who volunteer their time and energy and personal resources to campaign for candidates and the issues that reflect their priorities and values. At the top of this list is equitable public education and public safety. As Kagan's dissent is powerful and clear, I will use her words. She is blunt in her writing, stating with truth and clarity that the court's majority acted less on the law than on a whim. They overruled the previous SCOTUS decision in Abboud for not exceptional or special reason, but because it never liked the decision. She also notes that this decision turns the First Amendment into a sword, using it against the workday economic and regulatory policy. And she adds as follows, "Speech is everywhere, a part of human activity, employment, health care, securities, trading, you name it. For that reason, almost all economic and regulatory policy affects or touches speech. So the majority roads run long. At every stop, there are black-robed rulers overriding citizen choices. The First Amendment was meant for better things. It is meant not to undermine, but to protect democratic governance, including over the role of public sector unions. This decision will affect us all, but we will continue to fight to advocate for our students, their parents, and for our community and ourselves despite the setback. And we ask you stand not only with your educators, but with our police officers and firefighters, and those who drive our buses, and who provide sanitation services, and a thousand other people who do the hard work of making our city great. We need your support, and we need to know you are committed to providing it." Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. John, that's it. That's what we have. Thank you very much in solidarity. That's the general public comments. Are there board member comments this evening? Oscar?
I just want to respond to both presentations. Thank you very much for your work throughout the years. And just in terms of what you're asking in the last, in terms of our commitment, just know that I want to say for myself, and I'm pretty sure everybody here on this board is committed to ensuring, you know, that we are supporting our workers, supporting our unions, not only in this community, but throughout the nation.
Thank you, Oscar. Are there other board member comments? We are going to move to, and the reason I hesitated, because I wanted, I thought of something, but we're going to have it sent out. I talked, we're going to send an item through the superintendent for board members to consider for a potential resolution on such an item like the news of the Supreme Court's decision. When we get here to adjournment, we are here now, we're going to adjourn in the memory, adjourn our meeting in the memory of two of our former employees. First, James Wirt, a longtime Malibu bus driver, who was originally hired as a substitute bus driver in our district. He worked for us 1970 to 2014. That's 44 years of service. Mr. Wirt handled the Malibu North Bus Route for many years through floods, mudslides, and fires. He was always dependable. He retired from the district in 2014. We also lost John McQueesh, who retired from our district in 2000. Mr. McQueesh has, was, excuse me, a talented gardener and worked at several school sites in Santa Monica, finishing his 26-year career with us at the Malibu sites. He was especially fond of Mr. Lincoln roses and incorporated them in his landscaping designs. His friends and colleagues described him as charismatic, passionate, and enormously kind with a mischievous smile. Following retirement, he got married and moved to the Pasadena-Alta Dina area, enjoying Monday night poker with his friends. It's in the memory of both James and John that we close this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Lori and John, as a second, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you to Sarah, to staff, Dr. Draddy.